Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, June 18th of 2024. With me today have Don Schwenker, Nate Flagel, myself, Mike Steinis, are your county supervisors. And we have Lisa Smith, our county auditor.
Good morning.
Bjorn Bjorn here from IT. Luanne, our executive assistants is here today, Mary from the media. And first on our agenda today is we will open a public hearing for the Jackson County Comprehensive Plan. And also with us today, we have Lori Rowling, our zoning administrator, and Laura Carstensen from ECIA. And I have not received any calls or complaints or criticism or compliments.
Other than when you talked about healthcare, you looked up.
We still make edits, right?
You have the word version.
Would you like us to add that?
There's more of us than them.
I guess it's a profession, yeah, I, you know, again, I didn't dissect it, pay me like I should have, but yeah, there's a few things that, you know, we each look at our own perspective of it, but. Probably a good, if it's not a big issue, I would think it's logical that we put it in there. Anyone else? Um, from the board or from your, um, staff?
I actually have a presentation.
Sure.
Um, we, I haven't received any comments either. But we do have a presentation that you'd like to do, it gives an overview for folks who are tuned in or maybe watching this later.
Okay, sure.
So, okay, this is a public hearing on the comprehensive plan, it's a requirement for the category of supervisors to hold this public hearing after receiving the recommendation from the zoning commission, so the full plan is available online, it's, uh, it's about 300 pages, there's another 100 pages of appendix documentation, both of those are online on the project website and on the county website. And so this, I'm gonna go through this today, if you want me to go through it again on the 25th, I'll be happy to do that, we can go to the next slide. Just want to take a moment to acknowledge all of the efforts that went into this from the Board of Supervisors. The hard work of the zoning commission, month after month reviewing and helping us get this plan where it needs to be, help of the comprehensive plan steering committee, they were very helpful in getting us to a vision and broad goals. Planning and zoning staff, Lori and Ruth are excellent, great support from them, and of course, the community, we had lots of people who also participated and sent in, sent us information, particularly the survey, so I want to thank them. So the purpose of this comprehensive plan is really to present that shared vision for the future. Identify goals and objectives that are long range for activities that affect the growth and development of Jackson County. It's a policy guide, it generally has a 20-year horizon, help to help with decision-making, and, and it has been shaped by public input over the wide range of issues. This is not the first time Jackson County is done planning, just going back to 2013, you can see there's quite a few plans that have been done, some of them are specific for Jackson County, many of them are also regional in nature because many things like the economy, transportation systems are regional. The way we, we developed this plan was we tried to bring people together, meeting them where, where they were, whenever possible, used a variety of ways to, to do that, and you see there. And really tried to help get a community vision and a consensus for the future through those efforts. We used a community survey as one of the major ways to get people's input, and we had 463 surveys received from from that should be July 24th to May of this year, so, um, people are generally, they're positive about the quality of life, a little less so on what's, what's the future gonna be like. Overall, pretty good rating on housing, a little bit lower for housing for specific groups like renters or young professionals. And they have, we have a good satisfaction rate with most of the county offices, mostly conditions found in the county and with services and utilities provided in the county. For the, the top fives, the top five qualities are listed there. The location, recreation, rural character, safe place to live, locally owned and operated businesses. The top concerns were those that came in with the lowest ratings, so kind of turning them into ones that are opportunities maybe for improvement. Employment, properties that are not maintained. The thought that housing is not widely affordable, safe and decent. That there's residents with racial or ethnic diversity are, are feeling welcomed and healthy, affordable food is nice that you get everywhere. We also ask people to identify the top priorities for growth and development, and that's the list there. Improving quality of life for residents, promoting economic development in and around the cities, preserving and protecting agricultural land, encouraging healthy, active living for everyone, and then retaining and expanding local businesses and jobs. The Board of Supervisors appointed a steering committee, we have seven, we had 17 members. You were able to get them from a wide range of skills, cross-representing different areas of the county. Their role is to identify the strengths and challenges, issues and opportunities for Jackson County, draft a shared vision statement, and then, and then they identified broad goals and future priorities. The role of the zoning commission was to review the plan, the text of each of the chapters, the maps, and they did that through their work sessions from July last year through April of this year, they gave us a lot of great direction on our public participation efforts. We showed them the input from the community survey and other sources of input. They held a public hearing and they have now recommended adoption of the plan before you. So the shared vision is really saying, where does Jackson County want to be in the future? And this is the, the vision that was developed by the steering committee, approved by the zoning commission, and we have had no negative comments about this. This is, this would be that vision shared by the community. Mentioned the steering committee also identified broad goals and priorities, and these are the eight that they identified. Again, the quality of life, recreation, business, labor, locally owned businesses, options for housing, childcare available everywhere, and then a strong, strong volunteerism. The way this plan is organized is we have a short executive summary, and then we have the, the chapters that you see here, and then the appendix where there's additional information, primarily comments from the survey. The chapters numbered four through 13 are all structured pretty similar, they give an overview of their topic. There's a discussion of existing conditions and trends, they have tables, maps, and other illustrations. There's a section about local state and federal programs, this could be grants or technical assistance related to the, to the topics of that chapter. They, they then have a list of issues and opportunities that are identified, and from there, we develop goals and objectives for each of those chapters. So these next few slides are a summary of what the goals for each of the chapters mean. So chapter four, community facilities and services, is focused on maintaining the public-private intergovernmental partnerships, establishing new relationships or related to committing facilities and services, focus on meaning health, childcare and education. Infrastructure and utilities are both public and private, the emphasis here was on public infrastructure and on renewable energy, some of the public infrastructure is what the county might provide, some is what cities might provide, and some is what private sector or quasi-public utilities might provide. Transportation, you know, planning is done on a regional basis, and so the chapter talks about that and also has information about the county's five-year plan, four roads. The two main focuses here is to maintain and improve what we have, and then prioritize improvements to transportation. Economic development also is done on a public-private partnership and on a regional level. The main points here were workforce development, business attraction and retention, and tourism. For housing, this is, this is an area where county has perhaps more of a support role. And the cities and private and public entities work on development, the areas of focus here were to make sure we have housing for that workforce that we need. We have options in that housing stock and that we are looking at age-friendly housing. Chapter nine was dealt with agriculture and natural resources. And so while we touched on the agricultural economy in the chapter on economic development, we went into a lot more depth about agriculture here. We looked a lot at soil health and quality with the, which is a partnership with the Jackson County Soil and Water Conservation District, and then also watershed management and natural resource conservation. Because you have so many parks and recreation and cultural resources, we actually brought that into its own chapter. And this is focused largely on the work of your county conservation department, but there's in terms of the environmental education, outdoor recreation, conservation programs they offer, but there's also a regional coordination for honoring cultural and natural resources and collaborating. Hazard mitigation, the plan for this is actually being re, it's been revised, it's being updated, you should be seeing that this month, I believe. So this is really about three main areas, mitigating the impacts from hazards, trying to prevent them wherever possible, and being prepared for those emergencies. In the land use chapter, we're really focused on areas that are outside the cities, where the county has jurisdiction, and the ideas that were discussed were to make sure we're using best practices and to focus on preservation for agriculture, parks, open space, and natural resources. Chapter 13 is intergovernmental collaboration, the concepts we talked about here, we're trying to build local capacity for our local governments, and also to continue informal collaboration, such as the Jackson County Economic Alliance. And then also develop youth and promoting entrepreneurship and professional development opportunities for young workers. Chapter 14 is the chapter for implementation. This is where we focused on the goals and objectives for each chapter, the goals are broad statements of what we'd like to see happen, the objectives are quantifiable steps on how we can get to that goal. Goals are numbered, and so are objectives, but that's not a priority listing, it's just a listing. We also identify who could be the potential sponsors or partners working on each objective, this is by no means a plan that the county does alone, you, you saw we had a lot of planning over the last 10 years, 20 years, and that continues with this. We did try to come up with a timeframe, so there's a way to see short-term, medium, or long-term focus of the objectives. And then we also indicate where is there a related plan, or what are steering committee recommendations? So there's, there, you can go back and find out more as you begin to work through the goals. So these are all, these are set up pretty much the same, and we can just go, we can go through them in as much detail as you'd like, they are all set up showing those different categories that I mentioned. You'll notice some of these are ongoing efforts. So we're, we're in the next steps, we're holding this public hearing today and another one in a week. The Board of Supervisors has the opportunity to amend this proposed plan, as you, as you see, it needs to be. There's also a resolution for adopt this, again, this is a policy guide, so it is not, it's not an ordinance, and you adopted by a resolution, therefore as a policy guide. And then once we have it adopted, then we will make it available to the other counties, all of the cities and the public libraries, as well as ECIA in accordance with Iowa code. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions for Lori or Laura? Again, on, on behalf of our board here, the Board of Supervisors, we'd like to thank you and your staff for the dedicated work that you really put into all this, and it took a lot of time, it took a lot of effort from a lot of individuals, including, you know, the zoning committee and, and you, and, and the steering committee, and also the public, so we'd really like to show our appreciation somehow, that we appreciate what you're doing and thinking about Jackson County, thinking about the future of it, so. We hope that the young people got involved the best they could, and, and we can move forward. It, it's a vision, you know, again, one of these things, you might not look at it through years, but it's a vision, you can go back, you can look at it, you can say, here's what we had planned. Do we need to change it? Now we have something to look at, yeah. Really do appreciate it.
Thank you. Everybody for all their effort into it. We made note of your under healthcare, we will get that adjusted for the next meeting, okay? Slide will be done, was there any, when you guys skimmed through the, the 300-page document? Um, was there anything else that maybe caught your eye that?
I mean, we talked about a few things a couple, three weeks ago, and I think you've made the changes already.
I don't remember what they were, Mike.
Uh, I think some of the main events were like the fair and such, and we talked about the rodeo, because it is a, um,
Huge draw.
It's a, it's a national, it's one of the top five in the country, in the nation, in the United States.
Okay.
Small rodeo.
Yeah, because I don't know that we put, I don't think that was a draw.
You made a bunch of notes, and what I talked, I don't have my notes here, I'm sorry. And we talked about the schools a little bit, that they're building a new one in elementary in Bellevue, and they're closing one here, and they're going to add non to another.
Yeah, I don't know how we wanted to do that, we'll, we'll talk about that, so.
You know, because I hate to be outdated before we get to print.
Yeah, no chance. Although it will, it will happen.
Sure, oh yeah, no doubt.
This is, this plan is intended to be in part a snapshot, things will change.
Sure.
Nothing's gonna stay, not everything will stay static, but we're, typically, we would be on a five-year review, just as a check.
Sure.
Just like you described.
Sure.
It, this was our vision, this was what we were planning to do. What, what did we get done? What, what do we see? Maybe it won't work, we need to do something else, that type of effort about every five years.
Yeah, and that's a great idea to do that. It might take me five years to get through 300 pages, but you know. Just kidding.
Well, that's okay, I, um.
With that being, with that being said, the rodeo is this week, so it will be a huge draw, and we hope the weather holds up, but usually pours one night during the rodeo, so that's all good.
All right.
We can have some well-horsed license and stuff, yeah.
There's no way to count, motion to close public hearing.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and second to close the public hearing, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
So next week, same time, same place?
And I'll, I'll, we'll be prepared to do the presentation again if you want us.
Okay, now we'll see what kind of requests we get, or, you know, if anybody wants to go online, again, feel free to get online, take a look at it, I know it's, uh,
Yeah.
Sometimes it's easier to look at a paper copy, but we're not really capable of printing out 18,000 of those, so.
Yeah.
No.
Oh, it's online.
Yeah, it's online.
It's online, and it's also, then you can, you can search for what you want.
Yeah.
It's easier.
Yeah.
And, and we, I, I forgot to mention this, the commission was very, very much trying to keep this where a person could find out more. So there's a lot of links to state government or federal government or, um.
In the plan itself, where you can go to and find out the information you're looking for, which is a great idea, because you search and search and search for that kind of stuff, yeah.
You can check out the Jackson County Clean Energy District, you can check out any of the county offices, they all have links. You can look at grant programs that way, so.
Appreciate it. Thank you, have a great day.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is Jackson, Jaden Chekla, our Jackson County Assistant Engineer. His name's on the list, Todd, are you in your support, or are you?
I just like seeing you guys.
I think there was a safety meeting, did you guys make the safety meeting this morning?
We went there this morning, we're gonna, soon as this is over, we'll back over.
Well, somebody, one or both of you can come forward, please. What's he got, a bad wheel?
Couple. Okay, should we, did you?
They canceled yesterday.
We talked about.
50 yesterday, they canceled.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Uh, first on the agenda is City of Sevula for an RC TP extension. So we received an email last week from city clerk for the City of Sevula requesting a one-year extension on their fiscal year 23 RC TP extension. I clarified what date, no, they were looking for like just a one-year extension till.
Didn't do this already?
We did. We didn't do.
Press O, fiscal year 22.
Last and final was.
So is there a logical explanation behind this, or what's the situation?
Was funding, I do believe, or whatever you're.
I mean, we don't want to keep kicking the can if it ain't gonna happen, and we allocate somewhere else.
Are we preventing other projects from being done by holding funds for these, and these keep getting put off?
No, because I think once you award it, I mean, the people that didn't get picked, I mean, the other us would try to go back, but I'm gonna guess it would be hard to do that, too, like say, oh, you can't spend the money, we're gonna give it to somebody else, but.
At some point, that becomes a question, you know.
So does it affect the budgeting process as far as, you know, I mean, we still gotta have it in there, but we have to each year.
Carry it forward, yeah.
Yeah.
So it says they were not able to complete the work this fiscal year due to time constraints from other projects. It's what their letter.
So did we follow up and say, uh, one year is gonna, I mean, I guess we could again, could do one final, and this will get to the, I mean, if they don't get it done, so not gonna beg and ask why.
In the fiscal year 25, and that's it, and the money reverts back to the pool or whatever?
I think that would be this, you know.
This is their first extension, though?
This would be their first extension, at least to my knowledge.
I would make a motion just to do the extension for the approve the extension that they're requesting.
We highly encourage they get it done this year.
The one year, extension of one year.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the extent, one-year extension they have requested for the RTCP funding to Sevula, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
I would say maybe looking into the future, as people apply for these projects and try to buy for funds, we look at their funding opportunity and that being equated into the scoring.
Could it be that by incident?
Well, yeah, it's like, do you have the funding available necessary to complete this project, because, you know, I don't want other towns to kind of lose out, and then be, you know, lose out on a project that they could complete, because somebody is just trying to secure the funds and then figure out where they're gonna come up with their match.
Well, it's, it's actually works in reverse, it's like, you get more points if you are providing more of the funding yourself. So if I submitted a project for 25,000, and it was all gonna be funded by this program, I would get least, I would get the least amount of points, but if those types of projects where all the funding is on this program, and you get the money, you don't have to worry about finding other money, so it's actually the scoring is in reverse, because if it's a $50,000 project, and I'm using 25,000 of the rural county transportation program money and 25,000 of city money, all of a sudden, I can't find the 25,000 city money. I'm getting more points to say I'm using.
I get that, what I'm saying is, can we verify that they got the 25,000, because right now, it seems like towns can say, oh yeah, we're gonna fund half, and get the 25,000, and then sit on it until they come up with half.
So you're gonna ask for the bank statement?
Well, what I maybe would do is talk to Shandra and see if this has happened before, what may provision maybe put in to say, we, we need some kind of verification to say, you know, we're not gonna hold up another city's chance, because you say, yeah, but now, two years later, we ain't got it done because we ain't got the money, so everybody else is basically backwards a couple of years.
I think we could probably talk to Shandra about if they're gonna say they're contributing, say, 20% of the funding, find out is, what is the 20%, and how how guaranteed is that?
Can they get it?
Yeah, that would be my question, because if they say we're gonna provide half, and they don't have it, and a town that comes in second says, we're gonna provide 10,000 to get to 25, and we have it sitting in the account, but they get it because they're providing more of a match, but they don't have, and then they sit on it for a year, ask for an extension, ask for an extension. The town that actually had the 10, their match ready, to me, that, you know.
That would probably be the fairest way to do that.
That, that would be a, a way to kind of, to me at least, we can.
Or do they, or just say, you've got a year. No extensions.
Yeah.
You know.
You know, then again, yeah, your money is there and available for the next one, yeah.
I think, to me, that would be the simplest way.
Yeah, I mean, you do have.
There has to be some way to address it to where, you know, because this is twice now, two different towns.
So I would say, take it back to your scoring committee and maybe discuss some of this, maybe the scoring committee will have some input, you know. It's, it's not much different than real estate, all of our guy might take one 20,000 less if it's got 30% down and 10,000 more than 5% down.
I have to look at your guys' spreadsheet, I don't have it handy, but there's a, there's a few cities that haven't even applied for this at all.
Yeah, I think we looked at that a while back here, I think there was only one, wasn't there? Because you were, you were gonna actually, somebody was gonna actually call them.
This year that hadn't.
And I think somebody was actually gonna call the city clerk and see if they needed help, because they were wondering why they wouldn't apply when it's available, you know. Follow up with that a little bit and see who has not, and maybe we can even get some help from ECIA to talk to the city clerk or something, you know.
Okay, we did vote on that, yes we did, all right. Next is an entrance permit for Jody Bausch. Butchered that, 216th Street, Bellevue Township, Section 21, it's an existing entrance. I think we build some time here in the future, move back, so. Went out there, did our site distance. Just a little bit, missed our site distance a little bit from coming from the west, so it will require a hidden driveway sign. Other than that, don't see any issues, so recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second to approve the entrance permit as presented, all those in favor say aye, aye opposed, motion carried.
Um, from last week, just wanted to give an update on where we're at with reclaim. So after we compiled the rock tickets from last week and worked with Rick to see where we're at, we're at 24 miles completed, and um, we're at twenty-four miles completed, and this is snapshot of the last week, there was some work that was done yesterday. But as of last week, Friday, we're at twenty-four miles completed, uh, puts us at about twenty percent of our overall goal completed. Uh, so we're a little bit short right now, we should be right around thirty percent, given time of calendar year, you know, to, to October. Uh, but had some rains here a few weeks ago, and quite a bit of it, um, delayed us and, we're now, we're in need of a rain a little bit cuz it's dry again, but uh, a lot of the guys are, added as much as they can, but just wanted to give an update that, uh, and we are in the outer creek areas.
Right now?
Yes. So the thought was we'd kinda jump around, instead of like last year, we focused all on one shop, to kinda move around partially, so that way, um, one, the one grader in that district or that shop, his roads kind of, he gives him time to touch his roads versus spending a month, say, at his, the glade reclaim, the rest of his roads waiting a month to get a grader on, just kinda spread it out a bit, so they have time to maintain their roads and their routes as well, so. Uh, that's why we're kind of hopscotching around, so. Uh, then just wanted to give an update on construction projects. The Y sixty-one overlay was originally planned for today, it's now tomorrow, had some plant calibration issues, but tomorrow at six-thirty, there'll be asphalt, starting to get laid on the pavement.
From the west side, or from the east side, I mean. Or south side, what do you wanna call it?
Well, it's starting at Andrew, right? I would imagine, I don't know.
Okay.
That's where their paving pickup machine and all that's located, right there at the intersection near sixty-two, so I would imagine if they're gonna start from south or north. Uh, but that's starting tomorrow, and that'll go, um, at least six weeks, if you know. Uh, one eighty-four, haven't heard yet, but that'll be sometime late, or mid to late July timeframe, one hundred eighty-four, that bridge that is. Uh, we're working on, from last week, and we had the discussion with the two sixty-seventh street, uh, we're working on getting our copper material order so we can get that installed to get that moving, so.
Okay, any other questions for Todd or Dragan? We appreciate it.
Sorry, Lou.
Well, we've got the, we have the email, so whatever you wanna address, yeah.
Yeah, so I, we had, we had some initial conversations about it, but we need to probably, we're at home. I guess the first priority would be bridge inspections, how we're gonna handle that, and move on from there, but that would be the first priority, so.
Yeah.
We got a little time, he's, working till the middle of September, so.
Hopefully get some of them completed that we, that he had started anyway, I talked to Daisy briefly this morning.
That took us by surprise a little bit, so.
Yeah.
Didn't see you coming.
Well, yeah, no, and then we got ninety days, hopefully that we can complete some of that, so. Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Scotty. Are there any visitors or citizens that would like to approach the board this morning? Either, either online or uh, present. Are you guys on the agenda, or are you just here to visit?
You're here in your book, but I think, right?
Right.
So head around if you want to.
Uh, yeah, why don't we do that? Quick. You wanna do your portion?
Yep.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Oh, I said I couldn't be there, I was on a mission.
Understand. Thanks for the text, Mike.
And we were on mission. Well, it was kinda few and far between when you're out there in some of the hills, so it was either hit or miss one night.
Yeah. You had a good time, though.
Yeah. Luanne? Luanne is here for her portion of the meeting. Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, um, five o'clock this afternoon, um, it's a conservation board meeting at Spruce Creek. I think, um, is a tour and then the meeting is at five-thirty.
That could change, did you not know that?
I did not know that.
Now, please call me about three-thirty, four o'clock, I can tell you.
As long as, as long as the people who are supposed to be there know where they're supposed to go, so. Um, Thursday, June twentieth at six o'clock is a limestone blast per C and D meeting by Zoom for Don. Monday, June twenty-first at one-thirty is the rescheduled waste authority meeting for Mike, they didn't have a quorum this past Monday, so they rescheduled it. And at seven o'clock Monday night is tentatively the board of adjustment meeting, uh, for any of you that want to attend that. Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, June twenty-fifth at nine AM. In terms of business today, um, I can defer to the Together We Build people, we can talk about the Sevula Benefited Fire District, or you wanna do that, Mike?
Uh, as long as you're here, we don't wanna hold them up, I think we can, uh, have them speak. So Abramation and Danae are here from Together We Build, I take it, that's why you're here? Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for having us.
You bet.
So we're following up regarding, um, proposal of signage in Iowa State University Jackson County Extension, as their signage.
Ready to go, yeah.
And so our lease calls for your review of that, so. I wanted to make sure we could get that moving forward.
So, when you say they have it ready, what do you mean by that? It's made and ready?
Yep.
And what is it, and how and where?
Three foot by seven foot sign, and it's the same as what we've seen in all the architecture designs on that.
So we don't have anything to show or look at?
Yep.
Okay.
It's on that southwest side.
It's where we're going.
Yep.
Right. On the building.
Yep.
That's the plan.
Yes.
And how do we anchor it?
So it's what we had said, said they do the two-by-fours and then they put the sign on the two-by-four. So there are some screws, yes, into the building with the two-by-four.
Anchors.
Yes, yep.
But it's not anchoring each letter?
No, so you're anchoring the structure behind it, and then you're anchoring, anchoring the sign, so I suspect that's treated number or whatever.
Yep.
And have we spoke to the contractor regarding any issue with that?
We talked to John, is that what you mean? So, yep, so basically that's what, no, he doesn't have any issues with it, and we had to ask, like, if the sign ever came down, what would you do? And he said, well, they're just holes in the precast, so he said you just fill them with cement and you, um, you know, you get, you color the cement the same color and the holes are, basically filled in, but, I mean, we don't anticipate ever taking that sign down.
Well, not for fifty years, anyway, no, I, I, I guess, uh, we completely understand that, that there probably will be some fading behind this, behind this.
Sure.
Especially on the west side. Southwest side.
Fading around.
This is facing north, so they're, or facing south, so it won't be quite as.
Is it facing south or facing west?
So it'll be facing south or to west.
So down the west side of the building, yeah.
But now the other intention is eventually a sun, cuz our lease only agrees for one sun. But your guys is a, it's another.
I went back and read that, so each sublease has a sign on, I mean, it's, it doesn't say a sign either, it just says signs must be approved. So.
Signage.
Mm-hmm.
So the design that we had originally did for the facility, and all through the entire project, they called for two signs. So there was never, you know, that was always in the design, always showing up in the photos that they had done.
Okay, so, fill me in just briefly, so you were putting, your intention is to put another sign on the west side above the door where you're, no?
The, the second sign will be for the Together We Build Outreach Center.
Oh, well, that makes.
On the east side.
On the east. Well, on the southeast side.
Yeah.
So you're talking the south.
Closer to the fairground.
The east of the south wall.
They don't mean on the south wall, but on the east side of the door.
Or the fairground one.
Because it balances out the building, so like, there's windows on one side and then there's nothing on the other, cuz that's the bathrooms.
Okay, so you briefly talked about one time that, you know, the west side is basically your entrance.
Mm-hmm, right.
Um, so with the signage being on the south side, is that still confusing to go to the front door, or are they?
No, because you can't, when you drive up, you can't see, I mean, if we put a sign out on our side, on the west side, you can't see it cuz you don't drive up on that side. So we're hoping that it clears it up, because when you look at the building, if you have our sign up there on that left side, it really shows that that part of the building is extension, you know, so, um.
The other thing we could do is, is maybe incorporate in here.
On underneath the sign too, yeah.
So that that would point it.
Yeah.
To the west, to the west.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, and I guess, over time, it's naturally gonna come.
Yeah.
That that's where you go in at, or?
Well, and the reason.
Whatever goes in there, going forward, that front door could also be open, and then you'd have signage inside.
Yeah, and that's what I was just gonna say, is that right now it's locked because we can't see anybody who comes into the front doors from where we're at, so. If somebody is there full-time in that for front office, then yeah, that will change. And we do have a little vinyl cling for the, um, doors that are being made, that will say, you know, extension entrance, west side. So that will hopefully, I mean, some people will still go to the front door, but yeah.
I assume the sign's gonna be professionally installed, I mean, I don't want Dean up on that.
Well, that's a good sign.
They're saying.
Yeah, actually, it's been subbed out, it was through Iowa State Signs, and so they subbed it out, AP Graphics right here in the customer.
I don't have fun with that.
So they'll do a good job with that. We're talking, I think, I'm about the second, you know, the signage for.
Deciding that.
Yeah.
For the front.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, that is an action item for the board.
Make a motion to approve. Place movement aside.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve the signage, uh, installation as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
We'll be back with part two.
Um, very nice building, by the way.
Are you gonna do part two?
Take care of it.
Yes.
Soon.
After, soon, or is that gonna be after, maybe a donor gets naming right?
Well, what we're gonna do is, we're probably gonna be putting it up sooner than later. Um, the reason is, is that we wanna have it, have something up especially before fair, because so that everybody knows there'll be a lot of foot traffic and a lot of traffic and.
Yeah, they're gonna be trying to get in your parking lot, cuz that's our own park.
I didn't know if you wanted that angle center or something to.
I would thought they would shrink it. Alright, probably. He's out of business, by the way.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Luanne, do you wanna finish your portion? I don't know if you've touched base with Elizabeth or not, but.
I have not touched base with Elizabeth, so let's see. She shows up. Okay, the other bit of business we needed to talk about today, um, was the Sevula Benefited Fire District vacancy. And I tried to do a little education here, so I don't know if you guys have dealt with the Benefited Fire Districts, but they're different than like the city fire department. They're funded differently, don't know exactly how, but they have their own board of trustees, each one, there's one in Andrew, one in Sevula and one in Miles. Um, and they each have three trustees that are appointed by the board of supervisors, uh, to oversee that district, do their budget, et cetera. Um, apparently, one of the trustees for the Sevula Benefited Fire District, um, has moved to Bellevue and is no longer a resident of the district, which is required to be eligible to be a trustee. And we've had someone, um, who clearly would like to take her place as a trustee, but that person is an active firefighter in Sevula, and we're not sure that, that's not a conflict of interest for that person to take her place on that. Um, so first of all, I haven't heard this, anything from Shirley, I have talked to other people who know that she's moved, Shirley Peterson is the one, other trustee in question. Um, Lisa knew that she had moved, but I haven't heard from Shirley, so do we need to get a resignation from her, or is the fact that she's not living in a district, just, we don't have to have a resignation from her to do this? Or how do you want?
She moved. I think the first step would be to actually confirm.
Confirm that she's truly moved, I mean.
Right.
But in my case, first she got a summer home up there, or she moved permanently, or is it a, is it a vacation home, or is, I guess that way. Also, to follow up with it, we need legal advice to say what we can and can't do here.
And I have not heard back from John Keys, I said this, since I got.
We can't take any action on either of it. I would, I would certainly think, again, like you said, or like somebody else, um, commented that it should be a conflict, I would guess that the fire chief is on the, on the board, I, I don't know.
If it's a fire chief, I would say yes, if it's a volunteer firefighter, I would say probably not, but if he's a chief, yes, because he's making decisions for himself then.
Well, but, if you're a volunteer firefighter, then you're on the, the fire, you know, the, the fire district board of trustees, then you kinda become the boss of your boss. If you're a volunteer, and you answer to the chief, but you're a trustee, you then become the boss of your boss, and I can see where, it would be complicated. And that would be, we need clarification, so. First thing we need to do is to confirm that she's actually moved. Second of all is, does she still maintain an address of some sort, manner, or fashion that can be construed, because sometimes I've seen politicians or whatever, may not live in the district but have an apartment, or I've seen city managers do it. You know, and get, just make sure that there is a vacancy, before we can really do anything.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we're not gonna take any action until we have more.
Yep.
Okay. So I think that's all I had for you today.
Uh, you have discussion on other board visits, no, that's it?
I did the calendar already.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Have a good day. And we don't know that Elizabeth's showing, or? Becky wasn't here. You want, you gotta have a reason to wait.
No, I, I wasn't happy to. This morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the June eleventh, twenty twenty-four board proceedings written by auditors, and authorized publication of the official newspapers. I'll make that motion.
Very good.
Motion second to approve the board proceeding minutes of June eleventh, twenty twenty-four, as written and published. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
I need a motion to approve an invoice to Century Laundry Distributing for fifteen thousand, sixty-two dollars and nine cents for washer, dryer, and supplies for the law enforcement center.
Is this the commercial set?
Yes.
That's the commercial set. I thought we bought those a long time ago, or are they, we just finally getting them delivered and?
Uh, the invoice got sent to the sheriff and never got turned, and they never turned it in, they're supposed to send it to me. So it was approved a long time ago as a purchase order, but just never got billed because.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Motion second to approve the invoice from Century Laundry Distributing as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
I need a motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of nine hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-six cents. So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the warrants as presented. Any further discussion? We're thankful that the end of the year only comes once a year, is that what we're thankful for?
Exactly, we are.
There's a large portion of the sheriffs, there's a large portion of the county engineers, there was.
So it's the end of the year, and as everyone know, they're catching up and everybody's gotta pay their bills in a timely manner, so we're gonna get it, so not, uh, the.
Nine hundred and forty?
Yeah.
Jump a little bit. Nine hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars, twenty-six cents.
Nice to know we have that in there.
And it, it takes so much time, you probably got an email from Shelley late last night. And so that's why, because we're balancing into the funds, we're balancing by service areas, there's a lot that goes into this more than just paying claims.
Right, so the books gotta be correct, and the audit has gotta be right, and so rent tax stays low.
We're also paying for our audit, um.
See that.
Yeah, a little more than we anticipated, um, it's, we're gonna have to have a discussion.
Unfunded mandate.
That is, um, that's what, fourteen thousand over what we thought?
I don't remember what the estimate was, but it was sixty.
And we still don't have it yet. And we've called them three times. We are trying to make a deadline of June thirtieth to the S and P, um, because we are rated, and they are, have requested. um because we are rated, and they are, have requested our audit, we've requested to the state our audit, and they promised that we'll have it by June thirtieth.
Okay, so we can, what about the claim?
We're gonna hold the claim.
Okay.
And we have to have it paid within thirty days of invoice, but we're gonna hold the claim because we need, we need our audit, we have to send it on to the S and P for our rating. And um we haven't been successful in, in receiving it yet.
So we're in the mercy of somebody else.
Months ago, months.
All right.
Yeah.
We do, all those in favor approve the claims as presented?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
I need a motion to accept the resignation of Danielle Bickford as the administrative assistant in the auditor's office, effective June fourteenth, twenty twenty four. So moved.
Second.
A motion and second to approve the resignation of Daniel Bickford as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
Need a motion to approve and authorize the chair signatures on the FY twenty twenty five contracts between Jackson County Board of Supervisors and the four public libraries in the cities of Bellevue, Macocana, Preston and Sebula, with the county agreeing to provide the libraries with financial support of one hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. So moved.
So good.
Motion and second to approve the uh contract to the public libraries as presented, any further discussion? Again, that's just our portion allocated, is it per capita per that?
There's a formula that contributes a hundred and thirteen thousand to the four, to the four libraries.
Divided up.
They do, it's all divided.
Uh, what the, as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
This is for next year's budget.
Twenty-five, yes. Uh, I also need a motion to approve resolution number ten forty-two dash zero six dash eighteen dash twenty twenty four transferring two thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars in appropriations from the information technology department to the data processing department. And this again is where we're balancing all of these funds, and I think Bjorn was nice enough to, he had a little money left over, uh, and Bjorn's. Okay, that was really nice of you, thank you.
You've, you've been told.
Well and gold.
Well and told.
Yeah. I'll second that.
I have a motion and second to approve resolution ten forty-two dash zero six dash one eight dash twenty twenty four with a thank you to the IT Department. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
And that's all that I have to do today.
Thank you. Who's, uh, you guys in a arm wrestling, come first back there, or what? John? Yeah, sure, come on up, John.
I had talked to, I know we can't take action, but I just wanted a kind of a nod, and then I'll issue a formal changer. We talked about uh putting epoxy on the vehicle sally port floor instead of uh instead of just sealing it with sealer. And I did get a proposal on that, uh, it came up, I was able to get a couple of deducts to six thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars, I think I can get it down another three hundred dollars. Typically about nine thousand dollars, it's about two thousand square foot of epoxy. I guess I just looking, I didn't wanna make the decision without a kind of a nod from you guys. It will protect the concrete, you know, consultant stuff somewhat.
So I see these advertisements all the time for residential floors or commercial floors, and these things are guaranteed for life. Uh, is that something that is not the same as what we're doing, or I see these guys sprinkling stuff and doing floors, and they're guaranteed for life, so is that what we're doing or what?
It's the epoxy, so we're doing what we have throughout the entire jail, yeah, yeah.
Any type of guarantee on it, I guess is kind of what we're going for.
We'd have a one-year warranty on it for sure, but uh I can't say it's a lifetime warranty or anything like that.
So again, this is not something that was figured in when we did the construction bids or anything like that?
It was just sealed concrete originally.
And you don't think that's sufficient?
I think this would be extra layer of protection for you, yeah, the sealer you'll have to do pretty much on a consistent basis, the epoxy should last some time. You know, I, I can't say.
I know I've seen people put it on their decking and stuff, and it took some pretty slippery concrete, made it rather um a lot less. So I just think in the winter time, if they're hauling people in and out of their wet cars, rain, snow melt, all that kind of stuff, it might be a little bit more.
So it's a little more abrasive point to just.
You're gonna spread silica sand.
Sure.
So.
It won't be as slippery with that type of thing, it might be a safety precaution in case of a, an aggressive inmate, so. I don't, I don't, as long as we have funds for it. And uh, I think we're sitting okay-ish.
So I, I'm, I guess, yeah, you know, I guess I'm okay with it, again, that's one of the things that I thought maybe we should uh consider before we even started, that this is a protection that we needed, or again, I, you see these advertisements all the time, and they say they're guaranteed for life, and people say I had a problem when they come in and did my four, four years later, and they come in and fixed it, no issue, but I don't know if that's something that's available or not for us.
Okay, I, I mean, uh, I understand what you're saying, because we're all trying to keep costs down.
Right.
Because we're in that COVID period, and the costs were just going skyrocketing, so, I mean, it was sealed concrete, it would have, but that's something that you're gonna have to be consistent in sealing it.
So if we're not sealing it, what, what's the difference? What's the difference in price wise, what, what are we paying for sealing?
Fifty, fifty, well, fifty-nine.
I'm trying to get, they didn't give me a deduct in the sealer and the labor.
That's what I'm asking.
And that's why I said I, I just let go up to that amount, and then I'm gonna try to get more off of it, of course. So I'm hoping I, I should be.
This is just for informational purpose anyway, though, right, or you wanna say, you wanna give us kind of a?
I, I, I wanna negotiate it and get it going, if we're getting towards the end, and we got to get this done and get out of here, and they're here, and they're here doing it, yeah.
We give you permission to negotiate and move forward.
Okay, appreciate it, thanks.
Yeah, you get it to me for next week, and I'll put it on my agenda, get it approved as a change order.
Uh, yeah, if I get it.
Yeah.
It'll be, it'll be with pay.
It's all good, yep.
Alright, thanks, John, who run the arm wrestling match back there?
As I talk faster, and I'm like, one thing.
Alright, so we are joined. We're joined by Becky Chapin, our Director of Human Resources.
Good morning. Good morning. So with the upcoming retirement of Deputy Sheriff Russ Long after thirty years in July, um sheriff has made an offer um of employment to fill that upcoming vacancy. Um, and he has made the officer, or made the um offer to Kane Cap, so I would ask for a motion to approve hiring Kane Cap effective June twenty-first, twenty twenty-four at thirty-one ninety-five per hour, and authorize the auditor to implement her payroll purposes.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the hiring of Kane Cap as presented, any further discussion? So we discussed the schooling and the whatnot, so that all goes in effect with it, correct, as far as what he has already, or what he may need, or
Yep.
the term he has to fulfill, if he doesn't?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, he's already been put through the academy, um, he hasn't had any lack in service um in the law enforcement field, so there's no catching up for him, he'll just be a transfer.
So we don't have to do anything else, this is all included in the, in the negotiation or in the hiring process.
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
And then I would ask for a motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign the nine-month probationary certificate of appointment for Kane Cap effective June twenty-first to September nineteenth, twenty twenty.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the chair signature for the nine-month probation period um policy as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
And then just the last thing, a reminder with Lynn Boebes, um, retirement coming up, Lynne Birkin, um, the replacement, uh, is here today for the first day. Um, so she will be in front of the board with um Lynn later this morning, um. For the initial update.
Alright, my thank you.
Yep.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thanks. Alright, let's see, is somebody else here, oh? We have Elizabeth Townsend here, these are, uh, let's see what Elizabeth's official title is.
I don't know.
What do I see your name, I've seen all your. Oh, Jackson County Health Administrator. And other, and others, good morning.
Good morning, um, so this is kind of an unofficial report for you guys, but just more to make you aware. Um, I was approached by the Dressler Water Main Project Engineer a few weeks ago. Um, he had some concerns because the water lines that are gonna be going in that are continually under pressure, we're not gonna meet the ten-foot setback from a lot of the septic systems that are in there. Um, so instead of trying to go through each individual one and do variance requests, um, my board gave them permission to just move forward with the project, and then at the end, they would submit to us um where all the lines are installed, so that we know where they are within distance to each individual septic system there. Um, so that's, that variance will come to an end after the project is completed. Um, so any future variances that would be requested, hardship variances would need to be submitted to the Board of Health for approval. Um, so I know there was some question about um, the resolution that we have in place basically saying that we're not really granting variances, but that was more for the private wells to the septic systems, not the water mains. That was approved, and it'll just allow them to move forward, I know they have a deadline for the end of July, I'm not sure if that deadline is.
So we're hoping for a detailed placement of these lines, so what do you need?
So we'll know exactly. Yeah.
So I, I don't see any issue with being closer to the septic system because they are sealed pressured line.
Yeah, the biggest thing will be when anybody needs a replacement septic system, we'll need to know where those lines are, we wanna hit those. And you know, when septic installers go in, it's their job to locate those, but we will have a map provided for them for um any replacement.
I have no question on that project, are they gonna go through at the end and kind of replace the roading that's all been kind of chewed up and?
I think they will, yeah, I think they'll go and clean everything up, and it, it should look. I mean, I think they've done a pretty good job so far, I haven't heard any complaints about them, so I believe it's their job to go in and clean everything up again.
And how are we progressing with that?
So there's, they do have a deadline for the end of July, I haven't heard different unless then.
I have not heard.
Yeah, so I think that's, and so that was kind of the goal for this, you know, to kind of.
To be honest, I haven't seen a lot of action, I guess I haven't drove through the residential area.
I've been through, I go through maybe once a week, they're definitely, you know, making progress.
Go through the new asphalt street yet?
I don't know. I've been down there like in the last six, seven days, um. I do know that, I mean, they've already got grass growing up in places where they've already put stuff, so they've got like the main in, now they're just working on the individual lines that are going out to the individual properties.
And did I hear that there was others that may have joined up later?
Um, there is, yeah, so there's, I talked about it, yeah, so there's one that was in the resolution that is allowed to keep their private well, they approached us after the fact and said that they would like to plug their well and connect to um the water main, so that's, I did get some counsel on that, on the, if we needed to adjust our resolution to state otherwise, um.
So they got included in on the grant, they don't have to fully fund that themselves, huh?
So it's my understanding that they would have to pay for that, I haven't heard anything more from um
Okay.
I've listened on how that's being handled, but basically they would have to, because I don't think it would have been included at that point.
No, I, I, I'm shocked that I haven't had any calls or complaints, or it must be going okay.
Yeah, we had one other individual that said they were not gonna, you know, they weren't plugging their well, they didn't get noticed from the county, all that, but we, I was able to have a phone conversation with the individual and got everything straightened out, so they'll be looking after a while.
That's it?
That's it.
Well, that was painless.
It was just about the same length as back then. I don't talk that fast.
Second page. Appreciate the update.
Yeah, no problem.
Yep, have a good day. Alright, let me see back where we're at here. Lisa, you finished your portion, correct?
I have.
Um. Is Andrew coming again today? Any other uh boards or commission reports, again, we canceled the waste authority yesterday, we didn't have forum, uh, it'll be next Monday. Does any other meetings I've been to since the last, I bet kind of out of commission a little bit, but. Preston. Any other commissioner, boards you'd like to report on?
Early childhoods, just kind of getting their next year's budget all assigned out and contracts done with everybody, um, they're trying to work with sunshine to get them on. Years helping them a little bit, so.
We broke contact with the Mississippi Valley Workforce. Um, respectively, we had a couple of, possibly doing a few layoffs, and when they called, they were told to call Iowa Works. Why, um, the Mississippi Valley Workforce, they both asked, kind of what's our purpose? And uh, things started happening, so.
Well, sometimes you need a boost.
Things are going steady.
Who's laying on, are we local?
I guess we'll take a short reset this time. We will reconvene our meeting at this time, and we are joined by Andrew Long and.
Molly Horn.
Molly Horn, from the uh jail department.
Yep, so Molly is uh one of our shift leaders, she's on light duty right now, she's pregnant, so she's been helping.
Congratulations.
So she's been helping get a lot of stuff ready for the new jail, and uh made a lot of progress here last few weeks on packing stuff up and moving over what can be moved over and all that stuff, so we're getting that taken care of. Um, working on policy procedure, uh inmate rules, I think we have a pretty good handle on all that, so that should be about ready to submit to the jail inspector. Um, anything else you can think of off the top of your head for?
I mean, John made it clear that we have to have policy procedure in place, so that, yeah, he was hoping that you were working on that and, and uh progressing, that sounds good.
Yeah, Molly's done a lot of work too on the inmate handbook, so it's a good thing, um. We've also been working on going through old records, so our old records filing retention system made no sense whatsoever, it was you take the front page of everybody's pile for the month, or folder for the month, and put it in one pile, the second page of the next one, third page of the next, and if you didn't fit, you threw it the total. So, when I became the general administrator in twenty-one, we changed that, where we're keeping files together. Um, but we're required to retain this stuff for seven years, so we went through, organized what we could, purged what we could, um. For example, court paperwork is all electronically filed on E D M S now, so we don't need to retain that in our physical copy, so took a while going through, probably four or five years of records, but got that taken care of, so no longer have anything in the vaults downstairs or records in the evidence room downstairs, so we're making progress that way. Um, everything we have in the evidence shed is now out, so we pretty much have everything in the jail condensed down to in the jail, so we're getting there as far as cleaning that stuff out. Um, our numbers right now, uh, we have hit a new record of how many people we have in our own custody, uh, twenty-seven was today and yesterday, uh, so today we have eleven in our jail, we have sixteen shipped out. Um, so about nine hundred and sixty dollars a day we are spending on inmates shipped out, so. We're gonna go very quickly into next year's fiscal year, out of county budgets, probably gonna be shot by the time we.
Let's quickly get moving.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah, and uh, you know, what we're seeing though ultimately is longer jail stays based on higher quality prosecution and higher quality cases. Um, so the numbers of arrests are actually down, however, the jail stays are increased, and that's based on the fact that we're not letting so much just be flood down dismissed as it used to be. Um, so we're seeing higher quality prosecutions, and ultimately that's better for us. Um, but it does leave our numbers higher at the time, so we do have some higher numbers at the moment. Um, yesterday, I wanna say we had what do we have in?
Eighteen at one point.
Eighteen in our jail alone, which is eleven beds, so a lot of arrests over the night, um, multiple felony arrests, so. It's a lot of stuff happening right now in the county and in the cities and so numbers are high. Uh, we're spending a lot on that. Um, of course, with that, in addition to nine hundred and sixty, we're spending a day just shipping these people out is their medical costs, their prescription costs, transportation costs. Um, yesterday we had to ship out six.
Sixteen.
And we had to ship out six yesterday and unfortunately. A lot of the jails, you know, they'll call and will say, well, yeah, we can take one or two, or we can take two or three. Or we can take males, but not females. So we're going to multiple jails trying to ship these people out based on availability, so. Unfortunately, we're kind of in a pretty costly area at the moment, just based on the numbers we have in and. Of course, feeding the people when they're in our facility, not that that amounts to much, but adds up. Um, other than that. We have our excited delirium guy is, uh. Still in the hospital. We have warrants on him. Um, I did orders through the judge for blood draws based on his, uh. Spitting and vomit, all that on people, so. We should hopefully have him back, I would think, probably sometime next week. Um, I have the orders done on that, so I'll send that off to Allen Hospital as soon as it gets signed by a judge and. Get further testing on him. Um, otherwise, that's about all I have unless you guys have any questions.
Oddly enough, I was reading, uh, yes, this morning that, uh, the national trend actually had been down. For crimes and now that, of course, that it's got warmer, days are longer. Uh, people are out and about and picnicking and camping and more alcohol involved and the dump the trend is up again. I didn't realize that was a trend, but.
Yeah, it seems like typically our arrests in the winter tend to stay longer. Our arrests in the summer tend to be more of, uh, simple misdemeanor, lower level things where it's like in your public in taxes, disorderly conducts, people out drinking, driving. Um, so we see a little bit more of that in the summer than we do in the winter. Winter kind of a little bit more serious crimes, it seems like. Um. But yeah, so I mean, I I guess to the point of us having that mezzanine finished. If we have twenty seven in and we would have had a twenty eight bed jail, we would be shipping out in the new jail, so. Uh, in terms of that, I'm very glad we did finish the mezzanine and. Like I said, we would be shipping out of our new.
I would hope it don't continue, I guess. That's what we hope.
Right, absolutely.
Uh, I guess the other side of it, and Don mentioned this several times, have we made any arrangements? Or are we moving some stuff out of the piece by players and taking a look at, putting it together and see what we have and when we can start furnishing rooms or offices?
Yes, so Brent and I were there on Friday, I believe Friday, Thursday or Friday. Brett and I were there figuring out what chairs and stuff we could use, what desks, tables we could use. I believe Jim and I are hoping yet sometime this week. Jim comes back tomorrow to get over there and actually kind of start. Moving.
Well, I would guess it's kind of hard to see until we start pulling stuff out too, so.
It is quite a puzzle over there.
Well, one of our previous employees has volunteered that he would come back. He helped put it in there and help tag it and number it, whatever it may be. And he volunteered to come back and, uh, help with that, so.
Perfect. That would be awesome. Yeah, so. We're getting there on it. Um. Like I said, whatever we can move out of our current facility and into the shed, we have been, you know. Immate jackets, gotta hope we don't need, uh, jackets yet in this current facility, so. We're moving out what we can and trying to keep on top of it, so then when the time comes, we're not in a mad dash and scramble, so.
Yeah. Well, yeah, hopefully, again, hopefully we could start the process of moving in there in a in a slow process and, uh, get acquainted and. Everybody, uh. Enjoys a new system.
Absolutely.
One thing, as we hopefully get drawn near to, uh, the, uh, transition over to new facilities. Are we planning an open house?
Absolutely.
When, because I know there's a lot of people in the public that would really like the chance to take a look at it without having.
Well, I think you're gonna have to have more than one.
So I I do think that is something we should get it because hopefully it's sooner than later. We'll need to do it.
Right, uh, yeah, Hanson was talking to me about that again the other day. He said, you know, you're you're gonna want an open house and. From everything he's still told me, I'm thinking July, we will be in there. Um, I was there yesterday. The security electronics people have, uh. All the keypads installed that I could see unless a few are missing, but it looked like they're all installed. Um, the intercoms are installed in there. Cameras are. They have good progress on the cameras. I don't know if they're done, but there's probably cameras installed. Um, I mean, really, I think we've got to be getting close. I don't know how much.
So I guess, you know, what that makes it, the administrative side of it, I would think would be available later on maybe also, but the actually.
Yeah.
Facility itself, we have the inmates.
I guess you guys. And that being said, you need to maybe even pick a date and if we're not a hundred percent.
Finished.
Finished it, you know, because.
I I would get together and maybe try to pinpoint a little bit of a Hanson and say, hey, we need to figure something out.
Just a week ago, because you're gonna want a couple of weeks to advertise it or whatever.
Right.
And, uh.
We don't want to be holding up, not putting people in jail because we're having an open house.
Oh, absolutely. Thousand dollars a day will add up very quickly, so I agree.
That's where I think we need to be planning now, kind of set something, because if we're getting down to it, okay, if the desks aren't in there, if this ain't it, that's irrelevant. If they can walk through, see the the walls and the the other side and kind of see what they paid for basically.
In my understanding, as far as moving desks and stuff in there. John, I believe, reached out to the Fire Marshal's office and they said until they inspect it, we can't begin to move furniture into the actual facility. Uh, so I'm not. Correct, yeah. So. We're gonna wait and hopefully Hanson will have something lined up with them in the near future. Um, I I don't know the details on that. I just know he said we can't move that in until the Fire Marshal gives.
I just know they've been doing tours and stuff. They had, so I don't see why we couldn't get something on the books so we can put it out. That way everybody can see it, be there and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, absolutely. And as far as the the rough looking work, I think there might be a little bit that has to have epoxy left on the floors yet, but. Otherwise, as far as the major stuff, it's it's pretty well there. Uh, the control room. Is going to require obviously the computers being installed, all that. That's not in yet. Um, for the, uh, security electronics people for the cameras, but. I mean, other than that, I think the majority of the major work is is done.
Good.
Well, yeah, touch base with John and put it together.
Will do.
Are you guys still on your list you presented last week? It seems like you got quite a few of it. Quite a bit of it in the in the claims today.
It was a mad dash, but we, uh, we got it done. Uh, Charm Tax was the one I had been working with on all the the jail supply stuff. She sent me a list of what they couldn't get and then I ordered it from Bob Barker, not the Price is Right, but. They're from Bob Barker Company.
They're Bob Barker.
Yes.
So we ordered what we could from them, um, and from Charm Tax. We had a little bit of mad dash. They had, uh. The gal told me Charm Tax is owned by a Jewish family and it was Passover. So they're basically shut down last week, so it was kind of a circus of, okay, well, what can you get in for sure by July one? What can you not? And then, like I said, reaching out to the other company of, hey, can you get this to us? It was a mad dash, but we got it done.
The effort and, uh, yeah, we appreciate the updates.
Yeah, cool. No problem.
Yep.
Well, thank you very much.
All right, good luck, Molly.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good day.
Hey, you too.
Okay. I don't see Jack, but I see Lynn. So we got Lynn Phillips here with the Jackson County, uh, Coroner Disability Services. Good morning.
Morning. I have. A county employee with me, actually.
Hey.
Yeah, so, um, I'd like to introduce everybody to Lene Burden. Lene has been hired and will be my replacement. Um, she's here with me today and then she will come back on July first and.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah.
And then Lisa Smith, the county auditor. This is the orange back, the I T guy.
I don't want to know all the people.
Mary Haver, the newspaper.
Yeah, be nice to her, otherwise she's.
Okay.
Vicious.
Yeah.
Good to know.
And Jack called me this morning. He gives his regrets, but he, um, wasn't able to make it. Um, I think they were Maryland's cousin had passed away or something, so.
Okay. So today's the first day?
Yeah.
Feet are wet and. Stressed out and no. You don't look stressed at all.
No, we're good. Lynn's pretty good.
That's to say the least, yeah.
So we'll do our best here. Um, so I am here today to follow up on the region's governing board meeting from yesterday. For the June meeting, Jack was in attendance and then you were able to be there too. That was great. And, um. So the financial report, it, you know, at this time of the year, we're always looking at the fund balance. And if you remember, the legislation said we should have five percent fund balance. And lo and behold, we're less than five. We're at about two point three or two point eight. Um, depending on which figures used.
So I mean, they're gonna send us more money?
No, no, it doesn't.
Well, if you had over, they take it, you know.
Exactly. Yeah, somehow that road doesn't go both ways. Yeah.
Well, and some of that was, we didn't meet the other thresholds, right?
Well, previously, right, so they withheld some money from us. Um, in sending our quarterly payments in January and in April, so. Um, they will be watching the expenses here in the next couple of weeks pretty closely. And. What we know we have outstanding because of the accrual basis of accounting. Is we have to account for our expenses in June that will be paid in July, but will be accounted for in F Y twenty four. So they'll be looking at what that accrual amount is that we have to, you know, technically have available. Um, we know we have some outstanding bills with the state. Uh, for the mental health institutes and that's beyond our control, so it's very possible that. There will be some bills that will kind of hang out there after July first. Long after the current region. The F Y twenty four funding is is used up, so I think they're just gonna wait and see what happens. I don't know if you have anything else you want to add on that, Lynn, though? Uh, the board did approve yesterday the what's called the thirteenth amendment. It is year nine of the contract with the robbery on center to provide crisis services. So those services are. To continue pretty much what we currently have. And, you know, Jackson County continues to benefit from having access to those services because there are a couple of those that. Uh. For example, the mobile crisis, we could not afford to have that service available twenty four seven in our county if we're part of a larger organization.
Is it being utilized?
Yeah, in May we had six, um. Contacts, six visits here in the community. Three were for kids that called and or on behalf of kids and then three were for adults. The other service is the telehealth service that's available at the hospital and that usage varies and in fact, in May, we didn't have anyone access that. And that's really dependent on who, what kinds of situations presented the emergency department and what the emergency room physician feels. He or she needs in order to make a determination and what's the best recommendation for care for a person from a mental health crisis, so. Again, it what we know is it's available to us and that's good.
Yeah.
Um, our commitment numbers continue to stay relatively low. April, we did not have any filings where anybody was hospitalized. In May, I think we had, um. One substance abuse and one mental health and also in June only had one mental health, so. We're we're right around two to four at the most, but usually closer to one or two a month, which is pretty good for us.
Well, we certainly don't want to say we hope it gets you. We don't get you.
Right, right.
We wanted to say if it if it needs to be used, that we're using it.
Yeah, yeah.
It needs to be used, that we will use it. We are using it.
Exactly. I guess the only other thing, uh, the board did approve some contracts, which they will be doing again in the month of July. That's pretty routine at this time of the year. Well, but this will be the last time that that will be routine because if you remember. There will not be this governing body in F Y twenty six, fiscal year twenty six, and it will be a different entity making those determinations. So that brings me to the last piece of conversation that we're all most interested in, I think at this point, or I know Lene and I are. And that is really one of the things that it'll look like from a map standpoint and a district standpoint. So if you remember initially when Department of Health and Human Services at the state level issued some options, they gave us four options for maps. They held their first town hall, um, conversation last Thursday. And at that point, they presented a set of three maps. So they've already made a change. It's down now down to three maps. The one map that has remained has been the one that has kept the five counties from our mental health region as its own behavioral health district. Another map is taking the current geographic map of the area agencies on aging. And just using that distribution of counties and define that, use that to define the behavioral health districts. The third map now is the current map geographically of the community action agencies, so HACAB. Um. So of those three options, the only option that leaves Jackson County with our current counties is the original draft that's been around since day one of this conversation. The other two pull Jackson County out and have us go north and east with or west with Dubuque, Delaware and then counties around there. The decision, the announcement should come out no later than August first.
Who makes that decision?
Uh, Department of Health and Human Services.
And do we have a voice?
There is, uh, an opportunity for one more virtual. Town hall meeting and then there are two in person, if you want to go to Sioux City or Des Moines. They did not schedule an in-person meeting in Eastern Iowa, which I find interesting and. I think that's unfortunate. So there is one more virtual meeting. Uh, I can send you the information.
It was just.
Yeah, it it just was issued out.
Yeah.
It's noon to one. And I can't remember what day it is.
I guess I suspect that.
Ordered that to us this morning. There's the first, it's in Polk County, July first, July eighth is virtual, or July eighteenth is in Sioux City.
So July eighth is the one.
But I suspect that. We are represented, our district is represented.
Lori was actually in Des Moines last Thursday and so she sat with several other C E Os and listened to the one that they held last Thursday.
And you can't take Jim Glint to open up a little bit or, uh?
Well, it was suggested yesterday that maybe he could travel to either Sioux City or Des Moines.
Well, you know, I'm just saying Jim would be a voice.
He's a good voice.
Yes, he is. Yes, he is, so. That was commented on yesterday at the meeting.
Was he there?
Yes.
Jim, yeah.
And what'd he say?
I hear you. It's the one who asked the question of where is the actual meeting?
Yes, he did.
No, he's been, he's been involved, you know, since he's been on board and sometimes it's to the point where maybe overboard, but he is, you know, it's he's is a voice and, uh. We need representation in our area, no doubt about it.
Right.
If you're gonna do it in Polk County, well, that's understandable, yeah, but that's when that's where it happens, yeah, so. Um, if we don't have a voice, then I say we're just following along and get what we get.
Right, then we have to accept whatever they give us. Yeah. Uh, no, I plan to attend and then when they, I'm sure we'll do that together. Um, we plan to attend the one on July eighth and. Here now Lori was kind of disheartened, I think, by the the content of the one Thursday night. She. Felt that maybe the audience didn't ask, answer the questions that were being asked by Health and Human Services, so they're, to your point. They had an opportunity and then instead it sounded like there were some families that were more interested maybe in kind of. Um, expressing their concerns or complaints about services to their family members or how things currently are, not so much looking ahead. Is that.
Yeah, that's kind of what I gathered out of that was.
Yeah. So I.
When they were kind of self-centered on just their issue of what they've had problems with in the past.
Yeah. So I don't. That was not the intent of it. I mean, the intent was to talk about the distribution of the counties and how this is all gonna work. Um, the time, other timelines all remain the same. By December thirty first. They should have identified the administrative service organizations that will be assigned to each one of the districts. So.
I know it's ongoing and, uh, again, I just hope that we're represented to the point that we we don't lose out on services or. Funding.
Well, you know, the funding and the services. I'm more concerned maybe you're right about a voice as this moves forward. And representation on this advisory committee, if you will, and it is only advisory that will be formed. So. We'll see. Otherwise, Lynn, do you have anything else?
No.
Any questions?
Don't let her overwhelm you.
Yeah, I mean, don't be afraid to speak up, yeah.
Good, just getting my.
No, I get it, yeah, but it's hard to, I I mean, the new kid on the block, it's hard to ever speak up without getting. Um personal file on you or something, you know, he was in that avenue. You get boxed around a little bit, but.
Well, I think she'll see another familiar face this afternoon, I think Becky should be, Eskelson should be at the meeting this afternoon, so.
Well, we appreciate um um that you accepted, uh I think you did very well in your interviews and I expect that you do very well and we. And we're here. Something from us, don't be afraid, you know. I mean, you may say no, but we're we're always here anyway. Seriously, if you need something from us, we expect to to help you out and any way we can and. Yeah, whatever you can get out of Lynn, get out of her.
Well, you're not done with Fiona, we got it one more time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks Lynn.
Yep, bye bye.
Have a good day.
You too.
Okay, um I I don't seem to have anything else on my agenda. Any other thing before the board or questions before the board this morning? Have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye, aye opposed, motion carried. Meeting adjourned.